Cover everything. I don't know if I'm ever gonna get used to that. That voice.
It's like a smoke in the lung.
Um, I'm not, I don't know that I, what are the thoughts on whether I should read land acknowledge? It is on our agenda. We do, it doesn't take long.
Why not?
All right. May wants to hear me throw. How we did for the ball? There you go. We respectfully acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Abenaki people. Who have, um, who have stewarded this land throughout the generations.
Thank you.
That also gave me time to have another bite of cookie.
I'm welcome.
These are amazing. I'm so sorry for those of you on the screen. Jeff, you've gotta come experience Jeff Faking at some point. Um. So the next thing is to review the agenda for additions or changes. Did anyone have anything they'd like to add to the agenda? Or any, anyone want to change?
Um, under other business, I was just gonna bring up those supervisor elections because I don't think that made it to the agenda. And it should have, isn't it?
Yeah, cuz it's very, I mean, it's covered in your.
It is.
Report, yes. Or maybe we can, why don't we just put it? As part of when we do your report, just make sure we. Cover that specifically. Um. And. Under other. We'll see how the time is whether we try, you and I, Cory tried to give me a final update on all the stuff that you're going on with. E A C D and E D replacement and all that. Hi, Katie. That was a problem. Um, okay. So. There are no other changes or additions. The first thing on our agenda is Olivia, N R C S update. Well. Let me think. Uh, maybe, why don't we do just quick introductions? Cuz I, there are faces here that. All of us may not know. So. I'll start. I'm then the course chair of this, um, Wyndham County Conservation District Board, live out in Whiting Hand, Vermont. With my husband on the farm, um, milked. Way more cows this afternoon than I wanted to. Um. But yes, our daughter's there with us also, and we have a herdsman that works with us. And I'll pass it to my left.
Uh, Garrett Manchester, I'm with the V H C B AmeriCorps, serving at W C, or Wyndham County N R C D. Um. Yeah, that's right.
Uh, Isabel Bowman, I'm the Conservation Specialist with the district. Heather Blunt, Ag Specialist.
There Ross, Executive Director.
Uh, hi, my name is May Massan. I just started and I'm the new Ag Resource Specialist.
Uh, Jack Dolman, Supervising Committee.
Uh, Katie Morrison, Board Member.
Nick Kluga, also a board member, um, with small horse operation.
And then let's see, Kat? And maybe, I don't know, maybe we have all that, but I don't think so. But anyway, Kat, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kat Abbott. I live in Dummerston. I work with farmers on grassland bird. Conservation and I'm also, uh, working a lot on forest land conservation in Wyndham County.
Thank you. And it, uh, Olivia.
Hello, my name is Olivia Carlson and I am the Acting District Conservationist for the South Zone, um, with the Natural Resource Conservation Service. So, nice to meet everyone.
I think that's everyone. And at some point, we'll be joined by our other supervisor, Peter, um, Ben Long. Okay, so now, take it away, Olivia, please.
Okay, so I'm gonna start off of just continuing with the locally-led conservation delivery. So, once those. Board meeting dates are solidified, um, we did do a locally-led presentation on kind of what some of the thoughts are of kind of what Travis Thomason, our state conservationist. Envisions for the program or like how the future could be, um, with locally-led conservation. So, he would like to come down, um, to either do a virtual or in-person. Um, meeting to kind of talk about like what he was thinking to the board. Um, so that's kind of why we really wanna look at some of the dates for November and December, just so that he can kind of meet with you all. And if you have any questions, then he can answer those at that time. To make sure that we're all comfortable in kind of what that vision might be. Um. There is going to also be like a, a virtual, um. Option that isn't going to be taking place on the board meeting days, just in case maybe someone can't come to the board meeting that you could pop in and also listen to the presentation. So there will be some other opportunities that if you can't make that date, then it's not make or break it, but we'll all be on the same page. Um, I did touch base with Felixia and so the pending of the start date for the program assistant is still. Being worked through. So that's exciting because it's been a little bit since we have had a program assistant in the Brattleboro office. Um. And then we are going to be doing like a new eligibility date for. Producers, um, and there is going to be a standard operation, standard operating procedure on how to make that streamlined so that it's not like, well, there's a lot of gray areas and we don't know how to answer them. So there is gonna be more information coming out. So. Be on the lookout for that. Um. I did, everything has been obligated. So that's exciting. Um, I did break down of all the projects that have been. Um, contracts that have been obligated. So for equip, and I'll send this out to you all so that you actually have this in writing as well. So for equip, it was twenty-one contracts that were obligated. And that was a total of nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred dollars. So. Great job to Wyndham. You guys spent a lot. There was three C S P contracts that were funded and that was sixty-eight thousand, six hundred seven dollars. That was awarded. We had one R C P P. Contract and that was for, uh, twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. So Heather's like, I know which one that was.
So those were all in county, Olivia?
Yes, I specifically wanted to share all the hard work that you all have been doing. So, great job. Um. And so there was one ease easement, um, that was funded. I don't know if that was a project that anyone had worked on, um, but that was one hundred. Thirty-two thousand of, um, five hundred dollars. Um, we had four A M A. Um, contracts. And that was seventy-eight thousand, three hundred twenty dollars. And then the final one was for your local fun pool, um, for fiscal year. Twenty-four, so last year, um, and that was for, um, two hundred seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. Um. And just to look at some of the practices that were funded through the local fun pool, brush management was listed, forest stand improvement. Probative weed control, forest trails and landing, early successional habitat and structures for wildlife. So again, great job. Um. Guys did a lot of great hard work, um, and it shows. So again, like keep up the good work. Exciting news for the next local fun pool. Um, hopefully we get a lot more great candidates, um, so that we can keep on spending that local money. In Wyndham County, cuz you have a lot of great things. So. Um. Does anyone have any questions?
What is C S P?
Uh, Conservation Stewardship Program. And that one is like. A great program that basically is just if a producer is. Wanting to increase the stewardship threshold on their property, it's kind of like a, a great treat, um. Of a program. It's for five years. The baseline for the annual payment has gone up from fifteen hundred dollars to four thousand. Dollars each year. So that is a nice increase. Thank you, Inflation Reduction Act, uh, for helping that along. Um, and that is something that our programs are always changing. So that's something to keep in mind, um, because, you know, previously it was a lower rate.
So Olivia, I have a question and, and. My husband probably knows the answer to this, but if you're already in the program, does your baseline increase or is that just for new contracts?
So. If you had a minimum.
First year anyway.
So baseline, basically, if you already got paid out for that year, we are not changing, um, to increase the minimum payments. Um, so if I'll have to look at your contract, um, with Emma Keister, but, um, we have been going through and. Increasing the minimum payments, um, to make sure that we are meeting that threshold. But again, if you got paid out. On the first year, then we're not going to be back paying and increasing that.
I just, yeah, I, I'm always curious. Some, so many of these programs, it seems like always improve. After we've started.
Yes.
So I, that's why, like, and not just on my own account, but for other producers and stuff, just wondering whether. You know, it's another case of, um. You always wish you'd stop, waited to start or something. I don't know.
Yeah, we have been evaluating all the contracts that have had the minimum payment and we have been increasing them if they did not meet that requirement. A lot of times with the ag producers, they have so many land uses, um, so they already have planned something on each land use. And so that's kind of why you might not see a minimum payment increase because you are meeting that minimum payment.
Yeah. And again. My husband, I have always kind of let him handle most of these things, although I'm the official scan and send the forms back person in the house. And I definitely am the only one that knows how to do that, but.
Hey, you're a tag team approach, right? And just be like, hey, I'm gonna look at this scan before I send it back.
Olivia, C S P counts against the fourth, is it four hundred thousand cap on the farm bill for any individual producer?
Um, so that is a different.
Is a different gap for that?
Yes, let me just make sure. For me to look up so I don't say the wrong information. And anyone can apply to C S P.
Even if they haven't done equip prior?
Yep. There's some producers that basically we have had a site visit on and it was just like, you know what? You're just ready for C S P. Sometimes that doesn't happen often, but you know, when it does, it's a great thing.
Can you also, um, remind, I didn't catch the name of the person who's gonna come down to do the. Presentation about the, or. The presentation about the locally-led process.
Travis Thomason. He's the State Conservationist.
Tomlinson?
Thomason.
I think it's T O N A S O N. So now. There's a P, maybe there's an H.
There's no P.
Yes, yeah.
I can always look it up later too.
He's Googleable.
Right.
Most recent. Can't remember where he's from.
Utah, yeah.
Yeah, and he did live in Hawaii for a little bit, so that is going to be a great thing when you meet him.
It's T H and then there's no P. But Thomason.
Thomason?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, what I'm thinking is it was a different cap of two hundred thousand dollars because I do know that there has been instances where if an entity is separate from each other, then basically you could apply. To different, um. Like to do two different applications cuz it's not the same entity. And that is a determination that we like to make.
Um, I'm just wondering, Olivia, if you can just let us know that when you find that.
Yep, I will put it in the chat.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Just in, in, um. Trying to keep things moving along. So were there other things you wanted to share with us tonight or?
That was it. If you didn't have any other additional questions.
Thanks for those numbers. It's cool to hear. It's Wyndham County.
Yeah, I mean, we did, we spent a lot of money. I didn't compile all of them separately from all of the counties, which I will do if that's something that you would like to see. But I was like, wow, like we spent a lot of money and it's really exciting. Um, so again, that's not going with this year's local fun pool. That was for last year's local fun pool.
You know, they corrected me on that. Um. It would be nice to see a comparison at some point from previous years. I don't know if that data exists or not.
I can find that out if you want. Like, how far would you like me to go back?
Just like a couple of years would be cool to see like if there's a growth pattern that we can point to.
For sure. So like to twenty twenty-two would be good or would you want us even farther?
I think twenty twenty-two would be great.
Okay.
Not trying to give you a bunch of additional work.
No, it's totally fine. I, I mean, I like to see this kind of stuff too. I get nerdy a little bit about it. So, um.
Yeah, we, we will at some point run into the legislature about. You know, how this, this work leverages additional funding from out of the state and how important that is. So.
Yeah, you guys are doing great work. I'm really excited to see what fiscal year twenty twenty-five brings. And with all the new, um, employees coming on board, it's gonna be really exciting. Um, so.
No pressure, but you have to keep increasing. Even though the farmers are decreasing, no. Your type of that.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll even have a new farm bill in the next year.
Okay, crazy.
Yeah, that has been, you know, it's very slow.
Yes.
We've noticed.
Yep, more important things going on, I guess, not, but anyway. Um, okay, if there's nothing else for Olivia, we'll move on to proposed revisions to our pay and benefit policy. Pay and benefit policies.
Okay, I'm gonna ask this after, I always seem to try to share screens. I need to share the screen as zoom is. Is that too?
Yeah.
I ran drag. I thought it was gonna right size itself.
Well, um, Cory is getting this screen sharing up. I just wanna say the light seemed to be flickering here a little bit. So if at some point we just go dark, that's cuz we. Lost power here or something. And maybe it's only my eyes that are seeing the lights flicker, but not only flickered.
You can stop sharing.
Just really be easy, but it's not. Got it, okay. This is fun.
Well, you can pull it to the second screen first too.
It sounds like that. I've done this before, like, right size itself.
Usually you can, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your attention. Um, so there are three proposed changes.
It's in the packet, yes.
It is, same, same thing.
See, that's what I said. I'm worried.
I'm looking at the paper.
But this is for the.
Right, yes, yes.
All right, where is it? I know. Yeah. That doesn't help?
Oh, no.
Okay. Sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now I feel like we are at the eye exam.
Like this is like better, right?
Yes, yeah, better with the left.
Okay, so there are basically three changes that I'm proposing in here. A couple of them are simply to bring our policy in line with what we're actually offering right now. When this was last updated, we didn't actually offer any healthcare or retirement. Um, we said that we established language that says we want to offer these things and at such time that we find a plan. So like it said. Um, the district may choose to offer health insurance plan or capture a benefit plan in the future, should a reasonable lack of personal organization become available in the event that the plan isn't offered. I don't think we need any of that language anymore because we do actually offer a health insurance plan for employees who choose to take it. Um, the twenty percent number stays the same. Twenty percent of an employee's actual wages. Sorry, a contribution equal to twenty percent of an employee's actual wages towards insurance or cash in lieu of insurance. Um. And then. This is just correcting the language. District employees will be given the option of whether or not to enroll in the employer-offered health plan instead of such a plan. Um, or to take the district contribution or continue. Um. Or take health insurance, help cash in lieu of health insurance payments. Um, and it says the district may make changes to plan offerings through a vote of the district advisors without any dispossess. Um, so that's the first. That's the first change I'm proposing. Um. So then here's the 401K itself, um, previously, okay. Um, so the way the policy currently reads is employees get an amount equal to twenty percent. Peter's trying to do the meaning. Um. Equal to twenty percent of their pay and they can use that towards their healthcare. They can use it towards their retirement and they can take it as taxable income and they can do some combination of the three. So. And up until this point, employees have taken it as taxable income in their paycheck. So when we start, the, the 401K is supposed to go live January first. If everything stays on schedule, all paperwork's been submitted, it's, it's going through all the processes that have to happen with the provider. Um. In order to do the three percent match, employees will have to defer three percent of their paycheck, right? Cuz we match up to three percent. But the way the policy currently reads, it will take. That three percent out of the twenty percent. So employees would effectively see their paycheck decrease by six percent in order to. Take advantage of the 401K because we say that it's, it's the same amount of money we're just putting it somewhere different. So I'm proposing that because we can afford it, that we should say. The 401K matching is actually separate from the twenty percent. So the twenty percent is healthcare. And it's, you either use it for your healthcare plan or you take it as cash or some combination. Um, and then we do three, up to three percent matching. So if an employee defers. Up to three percent, we match up to three percent. So it would be a three percent raise in total compensation. Um, so that's the second paragraph. Um. District will offer a 401K plan to permanent employees. Once the employees accrued at least one thousand members of service in a single fiscal year, employees will become eligible for this benefit on the one-year anniversary of their hire date, assuming they have accrued at least one thousand service hours in that year. Once eligible employees may join the plan on the next semi-annual entry date. These are based on the plan, like the way it works. You can't add on other dates. So Ju- January one or July one. Individual employees may defer a portion of their wages into your individualized retirement account with the providers selected by the district. The district will match any such contribution to three percent of the employee's gross wages. So there was that whole paragraph about how this is part of the twenty percent. Um, which I'm proposing to remove. Um, employees enrolled in the district offered 401K plan may access their plan funds once employment has been terminated. Or upon obtaining fifty-nine and a half years of age or may take a hardship distribution per IRS regulations. Plan features will comply with IRS regulations and the changes regulations change. So that's all just a matter of talking down to the plans. I shared all of this with them a few days ago and said. Hey, does this, I want this policy to align perfectly with what we actually are offering and we went back and forth several times about language. So hopefully this. Truly correctly aligns with what we offer. Um, the issues with accessing the funds are something we haven't dealt with. There's government regulations about when people can access their 401K. Um, there is, um, you can take funds out early with a penalty. And that is a thing that the plan offers, that all these ones offer. Um. Which I don't think needs to be implicitly stated here, I guess, but that'll be once the plan is live, everyone will have the chance to meet with. Uh, a, a provider, a representative from the provider to go over all these details. We'll probably have them come to a staff meeting at some point.
All right. I mean, that's not something that we have control over.
Correct.
Right? I mean, that would be like. I mean, the fifty-nine, some of the age things. There's more for information than anything that we could change.
Correct.
In any case, does it concern us? I mean, once it's in the 401K, it's up to the, um, beneficiary to manage it.
Yeah, so this gets really complicated really fast. I mean, you don't entirely understand it all yet. Like, I will be the 401 retirement plan administrator. I'm signing all these pages. And one of the questions I asked was, I was like, if I were to go somewhere and he's like, oh, there's all this process to tran- to transfer ownership of the plan to someone else. And I was like, what if I was hit by a bus? And he was like, you should really not do that because it's super complicated. He was like, I guess, like he asked the other two guys in the meeting, Jason Whitney, I think you met at one point. And, and they were like, yeah, they're like, we would need a death certificate in order to effectively transfer the ownership. It's complicated.
Stay away from buses, Cory. Stay away from.
This, then this circles back to the conversations we're having at V A C D about the things that district managers are doing that like, maybe we should have someone else do these things across the whole state. Cuz I don't know that being a healthcare plan administrator and a retirement plan administrator is the best juice of my time, but for the moment.
Like an H R person.
Um, but he explained to me, cuz you could have the option of denying employees the ability to take a loan on their funds, which comes with a penalty. And I was like, why would I want to deny that? And he's like, well. It affects, as you accrue more and more money in the fund, the fund is. The district's property until someone takes their money out of it and you can, you get a different premium rate. Like your premiums that we pay on that every year based on how much money's in there. There'll be a point at which we won't pay anything out of the banking because we'll have funds in there to use for that, basically. And he was like, so if you're dealing with really huge sums of money and large premiums, letting people pull their money out complicates your ability to use those funds to bring down your premiums. But. We're a very small shop. I can't imagine us ever getting into that level of management.
And what happens when somebody leaves our employment?
It's, they can take it with them.
Okay.
And they would need to be.
That doesn't apply any form of legal right now.
Correct. I guess it could say terminated by the.
So our premium would increase.
If the amount of money in the fund went down. Keep in mind though, our premium right now is as high as it would ever be because there are zero dollars in the fund.
The fund's a new job, this period. New job. You have to have some word.
Benefit for, as a person, yeah.
And yes, you will definitely unestablish a beneficiary.
But then they also can take it out for their work fifty-nine and a half or something.
Some of these are IRS regs.
And I don't know the answer to that question. If somebody dies, if the funds become available, I don't know.
Uh, but I think that's, that's outside of what.
Yeah.
We.
And we will have. We'll have Josh from Ever Jones come to a staff meeting once this is ready to go live and let you ask all the questions in the world.
I think you give them a, the name of the beneficiary.
Yeah.
I think the forms all ask for one.
Yep.
Okay, although you wouldn't get much with an opportunity to enjoy the tax benefits from that donation.
Being with the district with.
Uh, it's like, maybe there's something in the chat, which I, oh, yeah, I've been. Uh, there was a question from, or there was a follow-up from Olivia about the C S P stuff. Do you want that now or do you finish the topic?
Let's finish the topic for us.
Kat, you have a question?
I just had a basic question. So this all sounds good to me, but do you try to align these, uh, policies with other. Conservation districts in the state or how do you?
Oh, Kat.
Not very well thus far. Um, something that is being worked on at the state level is, is examining. Opportunities for efficiencies between the districts and the A C D. And I think one byproduct of that would be getting some of our policies in alignment. We do talk, like. Fourteen of us pretty regularly and we share ideas constantly and we say, how are you handling this? So there's some. Birding that happens. But I wouldn't say that there's any cookie cutter language.
I'm basically protective of our individuality. I'm basically protective of our individuality.
Yes.
But also districts haven't had, like, none of this, when Corey was on, when I came on, none of this existed. So like, it's all been put, like, I really push for a 401k.
I think there might have been.
There may have been one or two that had.
I think only mine I have 401ks.
Okay, yeah, but yeah, here. So like other districts don't offer this several times. Yeah.
We're figuring it out.
Yeah, there's, there's still a fairly wide variety, um, among the districts in terms of whether they even have staff or not. Um. I believe there's still one or two districts that only have a district, or excuse me, an executive director, we're now calling them. Um, that's part time still. Um, so, yeah, it's what we're trying to get to is at least that there would be templates for districts to use for some of this stuff. Um, there's no one that can tell each district that they have to offer their employees these benefits or that they even have to have employees. Um, because districts are individual entities and they govern themselves. Um, but we are trying with the ACD to at least have resources available to districts so that there isn't quite as much research that each district has to do, for instance. Um, there's, um, Claire. Can't remember her last.
Ireland.
Ireland, I should remember that. Claire Ireland, Ireland, who works both for VACD and is the administrator for the state agency, the Natural Resource Conservation Council, has a lot of help, um, human resources experience and background and has been pretty been, um, helpful, I believe.
Okay.
District managers with some of these questions, but you know, that is kind of a goal is that we're at least trying to get districts, if they have employees and they are offering these kind of benefits, that maybe that, this policy would be the same.
We were the first district to write any kind of policy and this did make its way around the districts and people have all cherry picked from it.
Mm-hmm.
But then there also, there are just differences in the way people wanted. And differences, like you recall, we had that meeting here in twenty twenty-one, um, with Heather and me, uh, that we, I remember the board basically like, what do you want in terms of paying benefits? So like, we shaped it and other districts had different priorities. In terms of what they most wanted, right?
So I think there would need to be a motion to amend the policy.
So.
Thank you, Jack. Is there a second? And we can still have further discussion on this. Peter, are you seconding or raising your hand? Okay. Are there any other questions? Is everyone clear on just what we're changing here? So the motion is to change as outlined in the board packets.
Yes.
And as previously discussed. If there are no other questions, all those in favor, this amended policy. Uh, can I?
Alright.
Anyone a focus? And Corey, it probably would be good if we um, if these policies have a date.
Um, yeah.
Is that part of, I mean.
Yep, it says, hang on.
Okay.
I'm finding my cursor.
Oh, right up in the front.
Yeah, the very first page says when it was last effectively approved and then it's also saying this is submitted today. Okay, review. And I'll change that to save for today.
Okay, good.
And they're on, either our honor, they will be on the website, we have a page for policies. I think we should have all of our policies in one list that, because we're a public entity.
Yeah. Okay. Next on our agenda is annual meeting planning.
Didn't make everyone bigger, wasn't it?
You're still sharing this story, so they can.
Click smash, smash there. Ah, okay. Um, quickly, Olivia answered the CSP question. Each conservation stewardship contract with a person or legally limited to two hundred thousand dollars over the initial contract period. And then she put the totals in there. Okay.
Thank you, Olivia.
And she has left.
Oh.
She had told me earlier, I'm gonna hop off, it was great seeing everyone.
What is the CSP for conservation stewardship program?
Yeah.
Hey, annual meeting, who's?
So we have six people registered, so I would say item number one is we really need to get some folks registered for this event.
I registered today.
Excellent, seven.
I have a suggestion for next year.
Okay.
Don't have the payment amount be the first line of the registration.
You can change that stuff. It's gonna be.
After, after it says that.
Shared the link and like, you know, sometimes when you share a link, it like shows a webpage. It said something about payment, like initially.
Well, I didn't know it was old, maybe it was, but I shared.
It was just a thought, but you know, because it says in the invitation or what, or the announcement that, you know, it's a sliding scale and but the first thing you see when you go to register is amount you want to pay. At least when I.
Yeah, that may have to do with it being a payment form on.
And if you can't change it, that's fine.
But yeah, I have wondered, because it says, then again, I know you say you've wondered a bunch of times, but like, I feel like it says we have five hundred views.
Yeah.
So theoretically, a lot of people are at least getting to that page, but they're not registering, so I would like to know why.
Um, and roughly, how many of them? Do we have a goal?
One hundred. That's about what we're getting.
And the six is not, like, there's ten of us that are going period.
Right.
Six is not us. So we have sixteen.
Okay.
I would like a hundred paying numbers to be there.
Well, maybe not a hundred paying numbers, I mean.
I would like ninety paying numbers. Yes.
Um, and I, it was.
Yeah, I will be.
It was disappointing. Well, and that's a good question is if whether the folks here need to register or not.
I don't think, I didn't, I had you guys know.
We're just assuming that all staff and supervisors are coming.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, but like, I don't know if Sned is coming or.
And I paid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, Garrett designed some lovely flyers and has been hanging them up around the county.
Right.
Trying to get the word out. Um, I'm gonna try to dig in tomorrow, Friday on.
But anyone contacted, this is Boi that we, that hosted.
I didn't, why, just as I had the thought she might spread the word out in that area. I'll, I'll call her and.
That would be great.
Yeah. Oh, while I'm thinking of it, there is the gift certificate from, oh, thank you. Awesome, twenty-five minutes.
Very cool, thank you.
How long do you think it'll take?
What, the event?
Hmm?
The event?
Yeah.
Two hours, five to seven.
Okay, because I, I have a rehearsal at six.
I'll leave when you gotta leave.
And I, I work till five on Thursdays, so I'll be a little.
And at three is the three?
Yeah.
The Dammerson?
Yeah, we're gonna do probably at three, but, um, the site visit to the Dammerson project for those who are able to come. Our target audience for that is legislators, but obviously anybody who wants to can come check it out. Um, and I got a list from Meg, the lobbyist, the, I guess that's where it learned for action circles, um, of who I should invite, like Google. Because I was a little bit hung up on the elections not until the week before. Can't wait that long, obviously. And so she was like, oh, just invite all, invite all the candidates. And she was like, okay, welcome anyway, but if they don't, they don't. One thing I guess I wondered is, do I ask them to pay? Do I say, here's the registration link? Or do I say, we'd really like you to come, please let me know if you're gonna come and not even ask them for money?
I think they want them to come, I think.
Yeah, I think getting them there is, how much are you, how much are you charging?
It's, well, it's, they can pay, they have to pay fifty cents in order to register just because of the website.
Okay, but what are we asking for?
Um, I think I said the suggested donation is ten, between ten and fifty dollars per family, depending on your ability to pay.
Just get the legislators there, don't worry about it. The extra ten bucks is not worth not getting them.
Got it.
It would be my take. Some might pay it.
But we also will have a donation jar, so we'll get there.
Have a silent auction.
Write a five hundred dollar check.
There you go. I like this approach.
Yeah. But like, yeah, tell your neighbors, anybody.
One of my neighbors is a local candidate.
Love it.
Good thing or a bad thing.
This year. Another neighbor a couple of years ago wasn't such a good, oh, wait, this is recorded. Good setup.
Love it. Oh.
Anyone that even tries to be a candidate. More power to.
Whether thoughts of like other places we might not have already thought of.
Yeah, Garrett's being great and running around posting on signs like you said, um, like, community centers.
Yeah, what kinds of places have you been doing in general?
Country stores, public libraries, um, coffee shops, uh, bookstores. Yeah, I think.
Restaurants that sell grain, horse supplies, that, uh, 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 pet supplies and veterinary offices.
Okay.
Ooh, that is a good idea.
I was thinking that, but they only, my, I was at, I'm at the vet a lot this week and it's only like animal things. I can always ask, they can always tell me no, but I can bring it, I go next week. Um, well.
Okay, so most people who have livestock deal with their vet.
Two people called flying horses last week when I was there. I wanted to ask if they're a horse owner.
What did they call it?
They called the vet, asking, they were two different people called to schedule vet visits because they had to spot horses.
Is it anything to do with the license?
And that's possible?
Yeah. They're re, they're rehoming, rehousing those horses, right?
That would happen.
Uh, if they're ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of them were in pretty.
That's what I heard.
Shaving.
Yeah.
I saw some pictures.
Yeah.
Anyway, um, I'm just, yeah. Are you at town offices?
Uh, yeah, so I think the thing now is that town offices would be good. Uh, Rattler's obviously easy, pretty densely populated, three centers. Um, I think the smaller towns are definitely where I'm trying to really hone in, where I'm gonna be able to get where's the most traffic in the small towns. That's why I've been looking at public, um, libraries, town offices definitely, um, and then any other.
Especially if you election comes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, good point. People will be coming in, they pick up their relatives.
Maybe wait. No, that's a great thing, getting that out there. And I don't know about other towns, but I'm guessing like if you um, contacted the town clerk in Whiteingham, virtually they would print it out and put it out, but I don't know that. Tell them when the course that you should.
If you email Margot Gia, um, she can send it to all the conservation commissions and one email last week is definitely an audience we'd like to reach.
Right. And if all of you made the Audubon people all aware.
I don't know if I've talked about it with Audubon yet. That would be a good idea.
Yeah, Andrew's the president of the board of like, I don't know, the Wyndham. I don't know, something landowners or.
Oh, yeah.
I forget exactly, but it's some forestry related.
Yeah.
So I can have him send it.
So other than, other than rounding up things for the silent auction and rounding up people to go spend money and listen. Is there anything else?
We were gonna need folks to bake.
Oh, yeah.
Which maybe we can wait until when I'm in the meeting to like, try to remember it's been like a sign up.
Maybe still wanting tablecloths.
Oh, yeah, we need to, we'll have to make money for that. Um, I think the only thing we're buying is napkins. I haven't read.
Yeah, I counted, I have thirty-five or forty cloth napkins, but.
I don't have one hundred.
If you want tablecloths, do you want a particular size? They don't have to be white.
No.
Mine will be all different colors and shapes.
Yeah, we have ten tables.
Oh, you have only ten tables?
Right, oh, but, but, but side tables too, maybe.
I probably have that.
Yeah, um, but no.
Sizes?
Right. Uh, uh, I can get you the sizes.
Each of ten people.
Yeah.
Are they right?
But I'm, I'm all for the effective looks, like nothing matching.
Centerpieces of any kind. I mean, obviously they don't spend much money.
Right.
Is there anything we can do that would be creative?
We could theme the tables.
No.
Why'd you say Karen?
Like, like, each, like, each table has its own theme, the centerpiece.
Invasive.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Faces of invasive. They're still available when you remember.
Someone should take them home.
Yeah, it's mad if I try to like, bittersweet.
Yeah, maybe things that they should be planting in there.
Yeah. I'm not sure about that.
I mean, I hope. Um, we're going to Byhand Farm next week. We'd ask her, yeah, she's all flowers.
Will they still have them in November?
Well, that's what I can ask for one. I don't think, I don't know.
Pumpkins.
Yeah.
Pumpkins, that would be cool. Exactly, board season.
Game's farm, or maybe. I don't know, she's trying to see if soup soup and use them for a kid's program or something.
Oh, cool.
Add a group.
Nice.
All different shapes. Not, not to really sell and do much with.
Yeah.
Well, and then if we're gonna do that, they're outside, so, you know, that involves keeping some.
Okay, well, we only.
Fifty pumpkins.
Ten tables.
Frozen.
Yeah.
Ten tables, ten, so if you have ten pumpkins and then you could have a thing where everybody gets a number and you draw a number at each table and they get to take a pumpkin home. People kind of like that kind of silly, they love that kind of fun. Um, what was birthday this closest? Yeah, I mean, however you want to, but something. I don't like that one, especially in November. Okay, but in terms of baking, it's just random desserts?
I was thinking I'd bring a sign up list to the next board meeting so that we could try it and I'll make the same thing.
And it's okay if Hannah Fertz makes it.
Electric God does not like that.
Matt Deli makes it. Somebody. Uh, yeah, you don't, you don't have to begin, provide something.
Okay. So are we set on ideas for stuff for the, um?
We have a lot of ideas. We could always use more though, because we don't know a little all come through. Um, Garrett's parents are going to donate.
Yeah, so they have apple and pear trees, um, on their property and they're, they know a woman who makes cider professionally, so they have homemade, uh, it's alcoholic cider, so as long as that's okay, but yeah.
I figured we're already, we already have a catch bar.
It's gonna be adults.
Obviously, this is not a teacher.
Um, Olivia is donating at her house.
Yeah, well, she got pretty certain. Um, they're not in Wyndham County, but.
Are we having beverages besides the cash bar?
Are they gonna be?
Water, um, and I need to check this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Why don't you see if Andrea will donate a couple of gallons of cider? Yeah, she makes really good cider. And if somebody's got room in the freezer, it freezes beautifully, so you can get it now and freeze it.
Yeah, and she might donate a couple pies.
She might, you never know.
They're very busy, but.
Oh, but being her Andrea, she's likely.
Just donate something.
Can you go to the port and see? I have been to things that cater to, they just have like iced tea and.
Oh, they'll do it. Yeah, I just didn't ask for it.
Okay, we should probably add it.
Okay.
I just think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've got these in dab, I think.
What about coffee?
I, so.
And tea? Is that easier to do ourselves or easier to tack it onto a order?
Um, everything you tack on in the order costs.
It does, I know.
Well, we don't. I, the thing I'm worried about is cups, which isn't bringing anything like that, so we need to buy the spoons or something.
Well, we have.
What we have.
We have so many.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous. Are they, are they hot cups or cold cups?
A mix.
Okay, we got them both, okay.
Um, they do, we have access to the kitchen, so we can make it. But yeah, we, if you want to add to them, I could ask them.
I mean, making tea is pretty easy.
It is. We'll log in in a couple of makers. Yeah, okay.
Jeff is.
Yeah.
Did you have a thought on making?
You're gonna get it right.
I hear there's a skill to it.
It may not be as good as yours, Jeff, but it will be too. I would, yeah, I would almost think something hot is probably yes.
Yeah.
I brought that to you last. Or you could, we could bring the crock pot and do hot cider.
I like that, I.
That's usually pretty popular.
What a hot cider, what a hot.
Okay, yeah, just whatever about the cider, I wouldn't be surprised.
Something to do, yeah.
Um, I have something to chat about, but.
That's what I know.
Yes.
Okay. And then.
I think we're good.
Yeah, yes, please push it, please tell everyone, anyone.
DEI, DEI self-assessment session.
And I probably shouldn't say self-assessment, because we don't, we don't have another section from VACD yet.
Um.
Where are the times?
Nice, let's see, um, Nice, let's see, um. Yeah, I don't have anything proper prepared. I thought maybe we could just have a light quick discussion. Um, this Monday, we went to. All of us went to the Sowing Seeds Conference, which was, um, a gathering of all the conservation organizations of Vermont or New England. Um, and it was really great, um, a fabulous keynote speaker, Carolyn Finney. Um, who wrote Black Faces, White Spaces, um, was the keynote speaker. Um, and had some incredible topics. Uh, one thing that stuck with me. Um, was just the fact that she doesn't feel comfortable walking in the woods for a variety of reasons.
Like you're in Vermont.
Yes, yeah, um, and then I went to another workshop on, um. The Clemens Farm, which is a, one of the oldest black-owned farms in Vermont, um. And learned more about their journey and the struggles they faced when they went to go put their farm in an easement, um. And it was interesting hearing, I, I forget the daughter's name, unfortunately. But they grew up on a hundred forty-three acres of their farm and she felt extremely comfortable in the woods, and so it was just unique hearing that juxtaposition. Um, but then Isabel and Cory went to an accessibility workshop where they talked about trail accessibility and, and boat launching. On access?
No, I really want to talk to Maria about that. Maria and I were also on the spot with the sisters.
Yeah, um, and so I, I left with, with a bunch of thoughts and, and feelings, um, around DEI that day and just. Um, you know, it's not my place, I don't think, to, to try to make people of color feel comfortable in the woods. That's a different journey that, that they're gonna have to go on and, and I can support. But that's not a workshop or something, you know, that we can do, um, but. Uh, maybe looking into people of colors, um, farm owners or landowners. Keeping in mind their journey through navigating the federal state system, um, USDA is, has a history of, of treating. Historically underserved populations a certain way. They are trying to rectify that now, um, but still, you know, um. Underlying opinions and obstacles are still prevalent, but then also, um, the accessibility part, um. I think we can keep in mind while moving forward for workshops, when we hire people, our office is not accessible at all, um, like our individual little space. Um. And so, you know, just, just keeping those things in mind as we move forward, um, these meetings even, um, I love being at his house, but if somebody. Um.
Yeah, you brought that up before the meeting.
Yeah.
Tonight.
Wow, look at that. Yeah, so, um, I don't know, other people have thoughts and opinions from the, the conference or just maybe things they've been thinking of. Um, I know at workshops outside, I've been thinking, even accessibility, just like trying to get a microphone to hear people. We've been near roads a couple of times. It's been hard for me to hear, um. But, but if you're already hard of hearing and we're by a road or something like that, um, or there's a big group, that could be helpful, um. Something else that Carolyn said was, um, she feels a way about DEI. About organizations having the committees and, and, you know, this effort, so I looked a bit more into that today. And, and the overall thing was just that, you know, organizations put one-time funding into DEI committees, DEI funds. And that's last I touch on it. I really appreciate, again, I think I say this a lot, but the board's willingness for me to continue this monthly, um. And Court for supporting me and, and, and doing the VACD, um, DEI committee and stuff like that. So I, I think we're doing a good job of. Of continuing it outside of just doing the survey, um. But yeah, that, I just, again, you know, I always think, oh, we have DEI committee, we're doing such great work, and then to hear, like, people hate DEI and, and stuff, it's, it's good, you know, to, to. Check yourself and, and.
Well, do they hate DEI or do they hate the fact that it's lip service?
Yeah, exactly, and, and that it's, um.
That's so often it's just.
Yes, exactly, and, oh, it can be othering as well, another thing I heard, othering, um, uh, as in like. Um. I'm gonna butcher this, but like, we are this way, we have a DEI committee because, because they, somebody else needs, needs.
And the rest of our agenda is about our population.
Right.
Like every day.
Yeah.
We can come across that way.
Mm-hmm, um.
So Heather, the, the woman that you said was concerned about being in the woods.
Mm-hmm.
Did she say why?
She did.
I have a reason for this, so.
She did not. I, then at the Clemens Farm.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they went into why.
Mm-hmm.
As, I'm assuming one reason, that's just she has a furland shape, um.
Yeah, I, I have a, well, we were good friends, I've kind of lost track of her now, but she's a, a black woman that I went to graduate school with for a while. And when she was up to visit, it was a beautiful day, and I said, let's go for a walk in the woods, and she's, no. It took me a second, I was like, oh, she said, yeah, that's right. She said, when I go in the woods. What I see is things hanging.
Mm-hmm.
And she said, I recognize that you don't have those on your farm, but. That's the emotional piece of it.
Well, strange fruit.
Strange fruit.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. You all heard that song?
No.
Oh, you should, you, you should listen to that.
Yeah.
Um, what was her name? Did this song, it's, it's an absolutely haunting song. You should listen to it.
Yeah.
Anyway, I just, I was curious because I was assuming that was the same thing.
Yeah, well, she said for a variety of reasons, and so like, I think that's, yeah, one, and then, um.
Strange fruit.
Um, yeah, and so I don't know if there's a way, and for, for me, I don't know about, um. Anybody else, that feels so long ago, but, but then somebody else said, like, they're raised for that generational, like, well, my uncle, my brother. Um, yeah, she, from the Clemens Farm, she said, her mom broke down doing dishes one day because she just had a memory of, of she had a beautiful uncle and he never came home.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, men just disappearing.
And it chill.
Yeah.
That long ago.
No, exactly, and so, yeah, for me, it just feels so separate and far, and it's not. Um, and yeah, I just don't know how to make, and you know, I think it's just we all try to make people feel comfortable, um, and keeping that in our mind.
I, I liked your idea about, could we do something to help producers of color navigate?
Hmm.
Like, feel comfortable doing it.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And like that, I wonder, Peter, I don't know, does the land trust have experience with? Because like, getting an easement is a similarly like complicated bureaucratic government-esque process, and like. Have you encountered being with non-white landowners in Vermont and like? Had to think about how to do that effectively?
Um, we. We have, we worked with the Clemens family, um, and we, um. We helped Susu, uh, with their Maple Row farm, um. So we have very limited experience. We have more experience dealing with people who are of lesser means. So, you know, conservation easements are really the kind of tool that's available to people with means. Um. And. At least some means, and, and people with, who are really struggling, it's hard for them to make that work. Um, and so that's, I think, one area where we've tried to work on the. On the diversity and equity piece.
Yeah, and I know, and Peter, you might be able to speak on this, the Clemens family got creative with how to make the financial, because they did up and they had to put up a million dollars. So they became a, a not, nonprofit, um, took out the nonprofit, took out a one-year loan for a million, and then like, the money came back, or like. Hoping to prayer, because the money would come back for it, which is dead, but you know, but, but I don't know how they came to that idea. I don't know if they were advised. But just like knowing those loopholes, but those.
Strategies.
Yeah, thank you, um.
It's more politically incorrect or whatever term.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, um, yeah.
Um, thinking about like Carolyn talking about not, there's not feeling safe in the woods, and then I also think there's not feeling welcome.
Yeah.
And I, and.
They're not always the same.
The, what'd you say?
And they're not always the same.
No, there's a, um, well, everyone, I think knows the Christian Cooper she mentioned, and the birder in Central Park.
Yeah.
And that whole story, um, there's a gentleman that's been on the American Bird Association, I guess, a few times, I think his name is Jason Lord, who's a black, young black man. And he's talked about, um, like, he grew up in Milwaukee, and how as a kid. He remembers how excited he was the day he saw a cardinal, because if you lived in inner cities in the US, there aren't even trees. And so he's like, we didn't get, it's like, how would a cardinal ever find its way onto the street that you were finding? He's talking about how he didn't, he's like, the woods were for other people, like. Just didn't, even though they weren't very far away.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know, that just, that had an impression on me that like, that's just crazy, like, I've grown up somebody who's always taken for granted, but like, of course I can go for a walk in a park. And I don't know if there's anything we can do with the district to like, maybe that's an Audubon question sometime.
Like the youth, like, I don't, like, a lot of my friends growing up were not outdoorsy. I was like the weird outdoorsy guy, so like, they, and I think it was. A mixture of a fear and like just how they were raised, that the woods is not safe, and it was not a safe environment, so I don't know if that would be like a younger learning experience. Though I don't know where our audience is at in the district and how we approach, that we haven't had a lot of. Early age education, but that's where my first thought would go. Um, the major conservancy at the accessibility talk specifically talked about having hosting events that were just for certain groups. So like, maybe if you're only, if people who are, um, in wheelchairs, they would schedule, have a thing, have certain vans to pick you up. Take you to certain spots that were accessible, talk about those areas where you're, are appearing, or have trouble seeing, like, they have specific events. And that's maybe a thing, but like you said, how do you, like, are you gonna just, everyone come in the woods, you're terrified, and this is not, you know, like, there's gotta be a better.
And I would like, yeah, I think that one just struck me because. I walked through woods before months, you know, like, the woods are very comforting to me, um, so I think that's why that one hit hard for me. Um, but no, I love, that's a really cool idea to have, like, maybe at one of our workshops, um. Like an accessibility hour where we like, don't go deeper in or something like that, or like advertise that like, or maybe, yeah, that's the thing we do, it's like advertising.
A lot of the wording, like.
Right.
And we're talking about, people need to prep ahead of time, like, let's say you're in a wheelchair, you know, in this trail, it's four feet or something, so you'd have to look that up. It would just be the same thing for DEI, it's like providing that safe space.
Yeah.
Uh, knowing they could be there ahead of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think.
Um, I don't remember if I've said this before, like. And again, people have issues with this too, it's like, this is a welcoming space for all people to attend, like, maybe putting that on our, our workshop outings. We've talked about, um, at our outreach meeting, we want to start labor, laying pictures we post on, on social media of. It's like a sys- accessibility description.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 and it just tells you, if you can't see the picture, it tells you what's in the picture, um, so again, just, um. Yeah, those are good ideas of like, yeah, playing language, um.
You know, the segment you and I were in where they basically said like. Just pick. Like the ones thing, they're like, some people don't do that because it's overwhelming.
Yeah.
Think how much content we produce a month. You can't possibly add alt text to everything, but they were like, pick, pick one thing that you're just like, I do this one.
Right, so if it's like, we're gonna change, we're gonna update this month, we're gonna work on updating our templates for all of our outreach, so make sure they're accessible, that would be like. This month we do that, next month we do alt text, you know, sort of like that. It's a lot, yeah, yeah, and she, she kept saying it's a journey, like, you've already started it, we already have the E I, done this for a while. Each four meetings, so it's like continuing the journey by doing everything.
Oh, and just, I don't know. Like our announcement for this meeting, for instance, and with that, that it's here at Jeff's, do we have anything that says? We normally hold our ha- meetings here, but if anyone is wanting to attend. And accessibility is an issue, let us know, we have an alternative space to meet. And that is good, but, and the but is, they have to, that puts the job on them.
Right.
And it's, it's better than nothing, and I.
Then they have to speak up and.
But then they have to speak up, because they have to be the ones to say, I need the accommodations. To some extent, Zoom.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah. Is an accessibility tool, right? I mean, if there is someone that can't through stairs or whatever, but, I mean, well, we know Kat may be in a wheelchair right now. She might have broken her leg or something, and that's why she's not here.
If they have technology and internet.
Well, there's that whole thing, that's, uh, yeah, that's another piece.
I do think I should have a rent available up to the front door.
Sounds like you got a project. Are you handy? Can you?
Project. Well, it's a good insurance policy, but you never need it. If you have it in the room.
Yeah.
Um. A little different thing, I was on, on National Association Conservation District. Northeast meeting yesterday, I believe, and the topic came up about, so they have this program called. Uh-huh, National Leadership and N L G I, and so it's a leadership program that. The National Conservation Foundation, which is like the nonprofit side of N A C D, started to try to, um. Build leadership for N A C D positions, so it's for supervisors, it's not for employees, someone pointed that out. But someone yesterday also pointed out the fact that. To participate in this program is cost prohibitive.
Hmm.
And I brought up the point, and supposedly it's gonna get taken further or whatever, that, that is a big DEI issue right there.
Yeah.
Because there are many districts, especially in the northeast, so it was a big thing, you know, that everyone there pretty much was in agreement, that, you know. If you're just having a leadership program for the elite, if you will, of N A C D that can afford to take time off. And to travel, then it's not a really great program. Um, so, you know, there was some thought, you know, whether there could be, I mean, scholarships wouldn't address the time factor. It's still, you know, something that is for those that can, I, I don't know just what the time commitment is for it, but. You know, so I'm, I'm trying to at least think of those kinds of issues too, that it's. Um, because N A C D has made a big point, you know, they have a, a DEI committee and, um, I'm not on that one. Um, you know, and have done work, and that, I think, was part, actually, of where this leadership thing started, that was the thought, that we need to bring in younger. People, right, because pretty much the N A C D board is old white people. Not entirely, I mean, there's like folks from Guam, it's been pretty cool in the last few years to see that there's been more participation from some of the territories and stuff, but. Um, you know, overall, it's old white men specifically, but, oh, you know, uh, I have been. Going to it for fourteen years, and I was like one of the younger members when I started being on the board, and I'm no longer one of the younger members. Um, but I'm still one of the younger. Anyway, you know, so it's just trying to think of all the different ways for. Lit- that limit people, right? My husband's afraid of the woods, but it's nothing, it's to do with coy dogs and creepy things in the woods, not. He, he get his, the hair on the back of his neck, he says, and he doesn't have a lot of hair, and. Met him, he's got like hair on the back of his neck, but not on top, um, but he just, he. He goes to the barn at quarter four in the morning, and his spotlight's almost the whole way to light his way, because he does not like the dark. But happily, his things are just to do with things that go bump in the night or whatever, not any. Tragic family background. Yeah, we're so privileged, well, honestly, we just, like, should not assume that everyone else is.
Yeah, that was what I wanted to chat about tonight, and thanks for engaging in conversation.
Thank you. The only other thing that I've just popped into my head, we've talked about having some workshops for like beginning landowners and so on. Maybe we should have, I mean, Lynn is not the only person who's scared of the woods. Maybe we should think about doing a couple of little, do ones make you nervous? Is it because you don't know enough about them?
Yeah. Dean mystifying the world.
Yeah, yeah. You know, sort of the opposite of Beeks Forest of Mystery.
We'll do the day after, no.
Do you know about the Forest of Mystery? So there, the.
So there, the Long Island Environmental Ed Center has this fundraiser that they do every year where they have. Basically a play that is acted out in a bunch of scenes in the woods. And so you go through and there, sometimes it's music and sometimes it's scenes in a play. And you walk through the woods and at each stop, there is this. Piece of theater of some sort.
Yeah.
Absolutely charming.
Okay.
Anyway, so that's. And if you haven't gone, you should go some, it's different every year, but it's, it's just kind of cool.
And you have to book early, potentially get booked up.
Yeah.
Thank you, Heather. What one else with the stuff that you're doing? Keep this present in our minds. Um, and to have us not just. Think of it as a token thing and. Really try to work on this. Um, district manager's report. I think the first note I wrote, like Peter said last month, wow. It's been very impressive. I mean, like the financials about from last month, it's still good the last year. And I know that some of that's just timing.
Yeah, I will say like, there's a bunch of stuff I could invoice for, but I haven't yet because. If I work on invoicing them, you know, other things, I mean, it's a luxury to go, I'll wait until later to do that. Cause I'd rather work on this other stuff that feels more to me. And that's what the districts with deep pockets have had that opportunity to do in the past. So it is really. Um, kind of big boost for us.
Given, given our country history, that sounds quite extraordinary. Um, you've mentioned stuff, something in here about the debit card.
Yes.
You probably have dealt with debit cards and stuff personally or whatever. I just would say. Watch it because Leon keeps, I don't know, he had to just redo his or something because somebody was using it and. He still has the card.
People get the numbers. And that's unfortunately not just debit.
We still have some recurring charge on our account that I keep forgetting to, I have to call the company and say, we did not set this up. It's like twenty bucks a month. You'd think I could remember for twenty bucks a month, but. And whoever's doing it is just really like, wow, we hit the plan.
Yeah, I would have much rather had a credit card where they sent us bill at the end of the month, like that would feel like an easier and safer solution.
Well, and I like that you did put it that there's no like cash.
Yeah, well, when she was running over there with me at the, at that savings month, she was like, and there'll be a five hundred dollar cash withdrawal on it. And I was like. Can we not have that? And she was like, oh, you don't want that. Like, no, I don't think there would ever be a reason for us to need cash. She's like, yeah, we can take it off there. So that does seem like at least one less thing to worry about.
Looks like a good idea.
Yeah, we need cash once a year for the plant sale and I usually just get that myself. And then keep track of what I put in that I'm arranging, yeah.
And my other three things are to do with the elections. So. Um, what you said, you should be sure to talk about. Um, the first thing I have is it's Peter's term that's up, so I wrote, Peter, please run again. I hope you'll be willing to serve, but I also encourage everybody, you know. It is an election. It is not meant to be just let's appoint whoever's already on the board. So not. But I would want to lose Peter off our board, but if we had some kind of an actual contested thing, I think would be very cool. I mean, you know, that's, there are places that this is like a highly, and I don't know that it's in Vermont, but you know, this. These are like coveted seats.
I talked to the producers from California and she was like, oh, you control the waters.
Try to, try to work on the quality.
If the local fund pools continue to grow, I wonder if people might become more interested in it because we do have quite a bit of power in relation to those. Um, so petitions are due November fifth, but it closes business is what the policy from N R C C says. And I have a stack of them here if anybody wants one. They're also on our website in, in the office. Peter, I emailed you some.
So this is, these are the, we have people sign up so that for, for Peter if he wants.
Correct.
I forget how many signatures does he need?
Peter, do you want us to have people sign up for you?
I, I assumed that this was something that I. Passed around and got signatures for, no?
It is.
Yeah.
You can have other people help.
Yeah, you don't have to do it all at this point.
I mean, it's, it's not that many signatures as I recall, so I don't think it'll be an issue.
Okay.
Okay.
It's about twenty, isn't it?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-eight, twenty-five.
And I mean. We, and I know we've done that before, that we as board members have often signed, but again. We're under increased scrutiny, um, as, as someone put it at some point. When money starts to increase, a lot of money that you're having go through your business or your district increases, the scrutiny increases. So it might be better if Peter, you can find your own twenty-five signatures, um, just. It doesn't look like the board stacking in the deck, so to speak.
Yeah, I see why not. I mean, we know he's a good guy. Why can't we vote for him?
Well, you can. But I just. I know there are districts where, never mind. I think, yeah, we're advertising it and we're doing our due diligence. I don't really have concern for our district, but it's just.
Money will problems.
And somewhere in here, Corey. In the processes or whatever you talk about, the term, like it was once November or once the election happens or something. The term changed, would need to change from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine, but I thought it's a five year term.
It is a five year term. It'll expire December thirty-first of twenty twenty-nine. I just copied the language from Claire, so hopefully it's right.
And I also saw on here somewhere that it says, once you've been elected, we take an oath.
I saw that. I didn't know anything about the.
And I was like. I don't believe I ever took, you know, we'll take this position. Made my hat. The only thing I've ever taken an oath for is when I got, was on the F S A State Committee. I'd have to swear an oath.
You probably had to sign or take the.
I do have something that I saw, they oath when you.
Oh yeah, you do that.
There's a, there's a voters. Oh yes, but I mean, this references that.
I forgot to remember to ask Claire if that's something that she. If they have a plan for that, because that, that language is named. In the memo.
What's ours?
And I, I know.
I've taken the oath of allegiance when I became a citizen.
That's true, yeah.
But what oath do we take?
I don't know. It says it in the memo.
Somewhere in my house, I have a notebook and when I first got on this board. And I know there is a paper in there that looks a little more official than I had, had to sign. And whether there's an oath there as part of it, I don't think I've voted.
Says confirmation letter and oath sent to elected supervisors December eighteenth.
Actually, it says Senate.
Yep. And set S E N E T.
Confirmation letter.
The memo has it.
Sorry, I also at some point Isabel is, is able.
I don't know why autocrat doesn't catch all those things.
Yeah, I've just seen that's on page ten.
Are you in the same office space? I haven't been there in a while.
It's very tight squeezed in there. So once we get to shed, we're gonna move a bunch of stuff out of the storage closet into the shed and then we can move some stuff that's currently in our office into the storage closet.
Somebody in the storage.
I do think that we should get Travis to see our office sometime so we can restart this conversation.
Oh, that's a great idea.
But I don't think. Like it's.
Oh, he does. They need to renegotiate. So there's a, there's like a power sharing agreement over that office between rural development, F S A and N R C S. They are in the process of renegotiating right now, but we've been in that for two years. Why?
That process.
When I, again, when I was on the F S A County Committee, I believe. I was part of the process of, because they, the offices used to be in the post office building above. The court places were instead. And we had to move because they needed more court space or something. And I mean, their leases get in, at that time at least, like we looked at the S D Oregon buildings. And we couldn't do those because there wasn't carpeting. They were original wood gorgeous floors. I'm not kidding. And the carpeting had to have so many loops per square. Something. I don't remember why, but that's one thing that I remember was one of the details that had to be worked out. At that time, I believe F S A was the lead agency for the rental or for the lease, but.
Yeah, well, invite Travis to a meeting there.
Yeah.
When I, I said, I thought it would be pretty cool if we could get Travis down to Wyndham County and show him Wyndham County.
Imagine this, Travis at your farm.
Has he been to your farm yet? It's kind of amazing that he hasn't.
The core of the corpses.
Vicky drew us somehow.
Sure.
Cause she was spot checking Sylvia at that time.
Okay.
Not spot check, checking us, but spot checking the employee.
And yeah, that was, that was when I finally said, okay, obviously the federal government and the state of Vermont. Do know where our farm is. Cause I used to joke that we could do whatever we want on our farm because nobody knows where we are and they'd never know we were doing it. And then we had like fourteen N R C S people on our.
So it's further down the agenda, but the next meeting, I guess, just because you brought it up. Travis wants to come to a meeting to talk about locally led. I do have an email from his secretary Angela. That basically, she's waiting for confirmation from us that the meeting will be November sixth, because I said that that's tentative date. But she said that date would work for him. Um, he's requesting thirty minutes in the agenda. He is willing to attend in person or virtually. So I wondered like, hey, if that day works for everybody, well, um, yes, but then wondering, should I offer that if he comes early? Take him on a tour, like, I mean, it's tough because it gets dark at like four thirty by then. So he would need to come quite a bit early. And then hang out.
There's spotlights on the.
Not that. Yeah, I don't know how. Within, uh, the other thought is whether we, but day meetings don't work for all of us, so.
That's true.
I mean, this is kind of.
A special opportunity.
I don't know if people could do it. I mean, you're probably the one that's gonna have the hardest time.
I mean, it depends what it is. I have a little bit of flexibility, like Fridays. Fridays and Mondays, I have more flexibility.
Yeah, this is always.
I can certainly get back into the.
Yeah, November is feeling bad.
Yeah, what I asked was maybe we could have scheduled the next two meetings just so if that date falls through. He's not waiting in for the next day to find out about. Especially since we have everyone present.
Yeah.
Um, other things in the packet I wanted to mention, this Long Island Sound Study, Linda sent me this, so I just threw it in. This is potentially very exciting. Um, one of the proposed changes. Up until now, everything has been focused on nitrogen. That's like all they do. And they're basically proposing to expand that to cover lots of other areas. Like habitat qualities and things like that. So. The question was, do, I mean, there's a QR code in here. Anyone here, anyone in the public didn't submit it. Did we want to submit a comment as a district? I kind of forgot this existed in full, for last minute. I threw it in forward. The board meeting when you sent it to me and rediscovered it.
So we could come up with something by the next meeting.
Yeah, because it's not until November twenty-second. Basically, do we want to comment on this proposed plan? As a district. And I have reviewed the plan yet. And I know that the, the reason Denise is kind of pushing this, Denise is with, is she the Connecticut?
She's my counterpart. Well, she's the. N A C D supervisor at. From Connecticut and she's retired. She. I don't remember what her line of work was, but it was something that was connected with the districts and. Um, and or conservation. She's not a farmer.
So if I understand this correctly, like when we applied to the Long Island Sound Futures Fund for the granted funding in our nature to work. If you are in Long Island, the watershed. They fund all kinds of work, but if you are in the Connecticut River or you're upstream, the only thing they found is nitrogen because they're only concerned about nitrogen inputs to the system. And one of the proposed changes here, I understood Denise's email correctly, was that it would change that to be even way up here in Vermont. They would be funding available for things like habitat.
Then I think we should comment.
Does seem like.
And there.
We would have to do a clock if we weren't doing certain things.
As long as you weren't collecting data.
Yeah.
Isabel's just making sure she never writes another quote.
Make sure.
There's already other stuff. Happening and I think I. I either shared it with Jill or there's something at the Boston meeting. That I went to a packed room about. And again, Denise is part of this, but it's some program that gets into like forest health and. She was talking about on the call yesterday too, that. I think it's the same program and I'm sorry that I can't remember it. I know it involves Long Island Sound, but. Anyway, but it, it's broader than. Just like water quality and water monitoring or whatever gets into forest health and, and. Potentially like how much impervious surfaces you have in your district and those kinds of things in terms of what the health of your places. And I'm sorry that I.
Well, if you look at these things down here, this sounds like the same stuff.
Right. And this is maybe.
Resilient communities.
This may be what she was talking about was just this study. Um, but they're also. Was a program and. They're more looking for like a state as a whole to apply to whatever this is. So that's why I sent it to Jill.
Got it.
Cause I. Had the thought that maybe they might not want individual districts to have means jumping on it and taking something.
Okay, I can check with Jill and Claire. To just see.
Yeah, see where that. And again, I apologize for my vagueness on this.
I don't know how you remember where you are.
Okay. But yes, I think so. I don't know if you could kind of look at the plan and maybe give us a summation.
Yep.
Um, and I'm not trying to discourage anyone that wants to actually look at this to, and read it through also to do that, but. And I'm not trying to discourage anyone that wants to actually look at this to, and read it through also to do that, but. For those of us that may not remember. At the focus of time. To go through it, but it definitely seems like, you know, because we have done work. With Long Island Sound Projects and that has seemed to.
Yeah, this could be more fun than you do work we care about. Seems like a huge deal. Isabel's been attending, what is it called? The Connecticut River.
W P, Connecticut River Watershed Partnership. Um, they're having a conference next Friday that I'm going to. And they're gonna do some big groups, but then they're gonna do like regional specific groups discussing their work in the Connecticut River and like. Different things. I'm gonna bring our, um, Long Island Sound projects there. But my hope is to talk more about, this is very, I didn't know this was a place to be so many people will be talking about. I definitely have heard, like you were saying, Long Island, if you're in that area, you do get all these different cool fun talks, but like we get different ones. So it'll be interesting to talk and compare what other people have. What do you say the name of that? CRW, it's the Connecticut River Watership Partnership. They're the ones that, they were the.
The Farmers Alliance for that big meeting that.
That was CRJC.
Don't ask here in front of you.
Also, I will just share, um, at the thing on Monday at the Swing Seeds Conference, uh, there was a segment on the thirty by thirty, fifty by fifty. Very well attended. It's obviously a hot topic, but they broke us into little subgroups for part of the time and we worked on. They gave us each a case study and so then one of the case studies was Townsend, which I thought was amazing for the entire state. They actually had something in Southeast Vermont, um, and Chris Campini was there and he's the director of the Winnebago Regional. And he basically took over and studied that whole group. It was a very good conversation talking about like. How we get to those benchmarks of conservation in a place like Townsend. Um, and how there's a lot of regents in the community to support, you know, that initiative. It was, it was very, like, it occurred to me, Marie was there, of course, um, a couple of people who I didn't get to meet, but, um, somebody Green Mountain Conservancy, which is a local. Work down here. Somebody else local. So I was like, wow, this is, we, we've never had all of us in the same space before. It's pretty funny that it happened at a statewide conference. Anyway, it felt positive.
Well, and isn't that part of what David? Had in mind.
I haven't heard anything about that in a little while.
But I said that, that Monday felt like what he was proposing.
Yes.
A bit, yeah, I mean, like we wouldn't have. Yeah, and not that big, but.
In the like the Vermont. Water Quality Partnership or whatever that, that.
The southeast chapter meeting of that is coming up in a couple of weeks and it's at Scott Farm. Amazing. It's in our county. I didn't know that. Did anybody notice that Potney Mountain Association was one of the sponsors for the conference?
Yeah.
That's Kat's organization.
So something like that conference, is that just like employees or?
Anybody could go, uh, one of, one of.
I'm looking for anything.
One of wherever her supervisors was there. I think that was the only board member I saw the whole day. Yes.
Okay, well, kind of on the district manager's report, um, were there any other or other questions or thoughts? Or things you wanted to highlight?
Uh, I think I should include most of the plant.
Not my hop out yet.
Yes, I've been told we want pop. Peter, anything about Papa?
Oh, boy, Papa's. Tree of the moment, yeah. Uh, yeah, but for some reason that just keeps coming up and people keep asking me about it. I don't know what's. Yeah, I don't know. I'd have to think about that a little bit.
Okay. Should they grow around here?
I mean, yeah, they can. There are definitely some growing around. They're a little bit more common. In the Champlain Valley and the, and the Vermont Valley, um, where it's a little warmer. But they're around.
I also have a question for you, Peter. I was asked to press a plant and it's a vine, like footy stem. I assumed to just do the like leaves, but they also wanted the roots. You know, just like cut. If you were trying to identify a plant that was a vine and wanted the root, they're just cut. It's a huge vine. They're just send them part of the root, like cut that off the vine and send it to them. Or is that not a normal question for some thought?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't know what the rooting structure of that plant is like sometimes. Well, with most plants, right, you have the main roots and then you have branches off that and then very fine feeder roots. And I assume they're looking for something along the lines of a branchlet with some feeder roots to be able to press that.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
We got the chocolate, right?
That's the chocolate one.
Where was that?
In, um, Chester.
Well, again, is that something that's supposed to be in Vermont?
No, but I like told all these people, because I'm like, I don't know what this plan is. I sent it to Sisma and they figured out it was this thing. And I sent it up the line and they're like, oh, it seems like a just random occurrence. Like, don't need to worry about it. And then I talked to someone at the Wetlands training I was at. He was like, so excited. He's like, can you send me a plant pass and like, tell me where this was? Give me all this information. I was like, okay, so let's do it. He was the first one to do the flora. Of Vermont, new flora Vermont, one of the books, really did Vermont flora books and he's doing a, a next edition. Um, and lots more things.
But it's not really supposed to be in Vermont, so is it really?
He's including like things that are coming in and introduced. Different things like that, so it's all in the book.
The guy that does the, um, National Public Radio, uh, the Vermont Public Radio gardening section. Yeah, he did a thing about pawpaws just the other day. Yeah, apparently they're a hot item.
We're gonna smell out of them.
Yeah.
Coldstream Farm only had six to twelve inch left in stock. Like.
Six to twelve inch trees?
Yep. How does something like that fare?
Yeah, better protected from the deer.
He put the whole thing in a shelter. You can throw it. We have a lot of tree shelter. We could try that. They've not sold well.
All right, if there's nothing further for district managers' report, we'll move to the secretary's report. And we have minutes from the July tenth meeting. Thank you, Katie. Um, and minutes from our September nineteenth meeting. That we need to approve. Or we need to review and approve. If they're correct. Everyone had a chance to read the minutes. And if so, someone like to make a motion either on them individually or. As a group.
Are we talking about one in, in particular or are we talking about both?
Can either do one at a time or do both, whichever way you like.
Noticed a typo on the September nineteenth one, made an extra O in my last name.
I found it. I, I can fix that, you know, right now.
What's, like, see at after July, the meeting in. She went to the Miller farm that.
Any other changes?
I knew that we, uh, accept the July. Uh, tenth and September nineteenth, uh, minutes as a minute.
Any further discussion or questions? On those minutes? If not, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? So we've already, I believe, reviewed our next meeting date of November sixth. Is that the regular time unless otherwise? Oh, what about though?
So yeah, that's the question. Do we want to stick with the regular time? And invite Travis to that.
And it does not have to be at your house. Well, Dan, the fact that he happens into the farm is crazy.
Do I invite him to come early and try to show them some things? I don't know. They'll take us up on that.
Can try. I mean, it's more up to Angela.
Is that ours?
She, she definitely. Yeah, runs. I mean, no, she does not have power, but it's interesting to hear. How tight his schedule can be.
It would be nice to invite him with the rec- recognition that he probably won't be able to come. But he might. If he, if he really wants to get to know the area, he may. And he's got to drive a distance anyway. He may feel like it's worth it to add a couple of extra hours on.
And we could, you know, do something like a potluck.
We have done that before.
Supper or something. I think we did that, yeah, in Felix.
Putty and Josh came.
Josh were first on or something. No, I was just, Josh was leaving.
It was his new role.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, it was somebody's new role. Yeah.
But we're okay with that date?
It could be at my place. Like, that's an added. Distance for everyone to travel. You certainly have the space.
If you had it down earlier and you wanted to. Supervisor to go along on whatever tour, I could probably do it if I knew ahead of time. I could. I could probably, I usually have a lesson at that time, but I could, with this much notice. Probably jump one around.
Thank you.
I have a little more time.
Um, okay, uh, sort of your place.
Is it dependent on whether Travis is coming in person or do we want to just?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, coming out to Whitingham at that time of year is. Especially if it's gonna be at night. I mean, I mean, I'm willing to host, but it's, I know it's tougher, you know, especially like for Katie to get up there.
Yeah, to be honest, I'll probably be zoomed.
So I was, yeah, I was trying to think if. Either we do it here or. If we do it at the office.
Service center, we could see our.
Like trying to office setup, yeah.
Yeah, we do it at the office. Even if it was during the potluck, we could.
We can do that there.
Do a simple.
We can set up like outside in that area.
Like in the service center, not outside, outside.
Yeah.
It's November, Cory.
It's just like, they're gonna, yeah, it's not really.
Could either be a blizzard or it could be an eighty degree day. Who knows?
As long as it's not a hurricane.
Remind me what his role is?
He's the state conservationist for NRCS.
I don't know if you remember the name Vicky Drew, but he took her. Yes, Alexia and everybody's.
He has a lot of power over Vermont.
He's the reason this whole locally led thing is really, um. Receiving so much more like emphasis. It's a priority of his, which is great for us as a district.
Only six states are doing locally led.
Well, only six states have local fund pools.
Local fund pools. It was astonishing. Maine must be one of those.
Scott was being talked about the locally led process yesterday and I bragged a little bit about. Our locally led and the lady, my counterpart from Maine said, oh, we've been doing that. But she had, well, she had brought up some issue they were having with their locally led. Process and I can't remember now just what it was, but I was kind of like, well. I, I guess getting participation and I said, well. We've actually had pretty good participation, um. And also they were talking about how that locally led process shouldn't just be like an NRCS focused. Thing that we should be bringing in. Other people and other concerns.
Oh, we've been doing it.
Which I think we've been doing.
Yes.
Which I didn't remember to bring up that.
Travis was saying that, that he's like, you know, it's clearly easier for us to not do it this way. Like this is harder for us as NRCS to do this, to have this local process that's district led. He's like, but you know, we believe that it's worth. Kind of a challenge.
Yeah, he's, um. Ever since he started, I know he talked about wanting to get more to the local level. Other business just. I think I mentioned the ACD Vermont Association of Conservation Districts. Sorry, maybe I'm using acronyms and I'm not remembering to clarify them. Is undergoing, um, a kind of review process with a consultant. There have been meetings with those consultants. Cory has had. One on one or one on two or whatever. Um, meeting with them. Um, and in and around that. Jill Rachi, the executive director, has announced her goal to retire. So the, there is the process of trying to find her replacement that's going on. Vicky Drew. Who's no longer with NRCS but is now supervisor in Franklin County and is on the executive committee of the ACD has been. Leading that process happily from age. She's been doing that, um. And there's talk around, you know, who ends up being on the selection committee and. So that is part of what we're trying to work through with, with the meeting, the Cassidy. Building meeting, is that yesterday or the day?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, Cory and I were on, um, the consultants, you know, were great, like. Emphasizing that one of the key things here is that we get stuff in writing. In terms of just who gets involved with what and who has the power. They didn't do it that way, I'm sure, but who actually will end up voting on this. There are people that want or think all the district managers should have input and review to some extent the candidates and. You know, trying to navigate how we make this inclusive, but not so cumbersome that we never find anybody.
So I've been told I'll be, I think, a non-voting member, but on the selection committee.
Right.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, they offered, they said one of us could and Sarah and I checked. Sarah's like, you should do it, so like, okay.
I was gonna say.
But no, I was pretty invested in this thing.
I was happy to hear that. And you know, there's a lot of, it's, it's almost like these two processes. It's too bad that we couldn't have done the work with the consultant first. Um, to get a clear idea of what the ACD needs to be to serve districts going into the future. And then what the district, uh, the executive director should look like to make that happen, but, um. I think it will still all work together. Um, and I've been favorably impressed so far with the consultants and.
I have too.
Their ability to sift through all the, the dynamics and the personalities and, and they have seen. Some of the dynamics, um, which is good. I think they can do it effectively.
Are they gonna bring in like a headhunter to find?
No, I don't, I'm not. I don't know that we've actually discussed yet, just where this will get advertised, but I think it's going to be done. In, not in-house advertising, but.
The normal advertising you would do for a B A C D position.
Yeah. Yeah. Which is not to say that there may not be. Head hunting things happening and or people already aware of it that are thinking about it. I don't know, but. Um. It will be. Quite a child and at least part of what's happening in this process is the knowledge that. What Jill has been covering and what Jill has been doing. Will not be possible to have one person do. Just.
And is it? Or is it official? I was told Jeff Barber's retiring.
I had never.
I was told that on Monday by somebody at the A C D, so I think it's official, but anyway. So yeah, that. Well, some restructuring will occur. Yeah. Um, the B A C D annual meeting is November nineteenth and twenty.
Yes, thank you.
At Lake Maury and if I understood correctly, the twentieth is the day when there's a lot of stuff happening. And if folks only want to become for one day, that.
Well. No, I think the twentieth is the board, like the official board meeting, I think. And the nineteenth is the day the consultants are going to be there.
Okay, but the twentieth is the day that there will be a lunch with awards.
Yes.
Okay, and that would be the day that staff would be likely to come, because we try to plan some activities for them.
The boss, you want them to be part of the.
It sounded yesterday like they didn't want staff, was the impression I got from the rest of the committee to come to the governance.
Well, I express concern about. There's being too much staff from any one district and that dominating, but then I. Conceded that this is part of a consultant's job and ability, cause they will be um facilitating these sessions. Um. So I said, that's great then, cause I. Feel sometimes less, no, I don't feel less incapable. It is a stress. To try to run meetings with very dominant people there, um. For anywhere, and you said the nineteenth and twenty?
Yes, so we could maybe use some guidance on which days.
Does everyone get, yeah, I will try to get clarification in there.
Yeah.
We don't hear something from insight or.
And the rest of the districts need to know, cause like. They will be poorly attended if it doesn't get around very soon.
Right, I, I do know that they're trying to structure it, how did Jill put it? So that it's kind of à la carte, so that like if. Employees, staff, whatever we wanna call wonderful people. Can only, you know, go to one day or the district can only afford to send people for one day, then it will be separated such that that could happen.
Cause it, it was a substantial cost last year, like for.
Yeah, I have not heard what kind of costs there will be this year. Um.
But it would be wonderful if any other supervisors can go.
It would be amazing to have what we did, especially because I believe it is the first day. Um. So this, these consultants are going to be sending out some kind of a survey. Right, I believe to supervisors and staff. And then I think. Bringing us together and having conversations around. What the A C D looks like and stuff, and so it would be really great to have participation. Besides just me and when, if we can.
It went back to you again last year, that was great.
And you even got an award. So you guys.
I can't promise you. Um. Sage, who's one of the consultants, wants to come to our November meeting.
Yeah, so how will that work if we're doing it?
She can come to the potluck and she can meet Travis and.
And they can see the office space.
I don't think she needs that much time. It will just be, it'll be a full agenda. Um, she lives in Broadbent, so.
I knew it was mentioned that she was in Southern Vermont, so, oh, so she could be easily in for some.
Yeah.
Yeah. If that, yeah, if that works, then that would be great.
I mean, if it's a busy agenda, it's a busy agenda. I know it's unheard of for us to run late, but um. That wasn't a snap at you, no. It's just, yeah, yeah. Um.
Yeah.
Oh, no, we should schedule, if we can, we should schedule a December meeting as well. Um, so it would normally be the second Wednesday, which would be the eleventh.
That's Violet's birthday.
Okay. Oh, Violet be.
Bye. She's having a gem birthday card.
Gem.
Gem.
Are you old enough to remember?
My brother.
We had a year, we had a year.
Ooh, yeah, she sold gems.
They're no longer living.
Yes.
Do, do we wanna stay with Wednesday in spite of it being Violet's birthday? Or, oh, good point.
Sorry, no, that's fine, sorry.
It's the quarter four twenty-four N O F F P board meeting.
That's a lot of letters.
I think that's one of the. I'm looking at my color coding. I think, I think you can ignore this one. Um, okay, so that would be a regular six thirty meeting.
If that works for everybody, Peter.
Sorry, I lost track of what date we were talking about. Are we still on the eleventh?
December eleventh.
Okay, yeah.
Her birthday party will. I decorate the house at midnight.
Okay, um. Anything else we need to discuss or anyone would like to bring up? May, this has been very exciting.
You're getting first board meeting? It's cozy.
That's the nicest thing they went and said about a board meeting.
Some of them are actually a little less latent than this one. Not all. And not a, they don't always include Jeff's cookies, so.
I don't know why not.
Sometimes he makes cheese things.
Those are also.
All right, if there's nothing else, we could have a motion to adjourn.
So much.
All those in favor?
Bye.
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 Thank you all for being here.